Okay, good morning, everybody. And it's time to call the meeting of the board to order for Tuesday, March 4th. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Do we have any citizens to be heard today on items that are not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next, we're going to move into employee recognition, and I hope public health will understand this. But I've got kind of a bad cold, so I'm not going to be handshaking and handing these out. So I've asked our vice chair, John Evert, to do that. But I would, I certainly am going to read the plaques, and then if, when your name's called, if you want to come up, and John will present you with the plaque. So the first one we have is for Karen Ivory with Public Health Nurse, and she's 20 years. And this plaque reads Certificate of Appreciation Presented in Grateful Recognition for 20 Years of Outstanding and Dedicated Service to Clay County's Citizens. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Amy Munson, Financial Worker with Social Services, also 20 years. And your plaque says the very same thing. Imagine that. Thank you and congratulations to you. And next, we have Jenna Bartonis, Corrections Officer. And Bill, I take it they're not here today? And their plaques also say the same thing, but there's just one difference, they have 15 years instead of 20. So you can tell them thank you.
Get them off for five minutes?
And while you're up, you might as well also take one for Gary Frisco, he's also a correction officer? All right. It's nice to see the longevity in employees. Okay, we'll move on to approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. And we have before us the minutes from February 18th and the 25th.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair. For a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve those two sets of minutes. Any discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Okay, we'll move into our 8:35 agenda item, and this is a 4-H program update. With us today, we have Regional Extension Director Ben Anderson, Youth Development Director Becky Harrington, and 4-H Program Coordinator Lisa Tyson-Bauer. Welcome to you all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for the time.
You're welcome. Good to have you here.
It's good to see you all. We've talked about this position in the past, and last time we discussed it, we talked about extension and Clay County 4-H putting in some grant funding towards this, and that's kind of where we're at right now. So Lisa's going to give an update in general on the program, and kind of where we're at and where we're going, and then Becky's going to get into some details on the new proposal.
Well, thank you so much. I'm very passionate about the work I do, but I'm going to keep this brief. This, in the last six months of my tenure, we've worked on strengthening the community clubs and our volunteer base. We currently have 10 community clubs and have worked very hard to keep things, keep things progressing with our community and our project clubs. We've had some great project learning, which is what 4-H is all about, and some highlights. We try to learn as much from our mistakes or our failures as we do our successes, but we've had some really great successes. We've had two hippology or knowledgeable teams which study the science of a horse, go on to national competitions and compete very well, including a group that just got back from South Dakota with a reserve grand champion. We've had a young man in his last year of 4-H come forward, and he's teaching a six-week performing arts class, so it's still youth development for him even though he's 19, leading these young people into what he's very passionate about. Friday night is our showcase, and we're very excited for that. Our first LEGO League, which is kind of a precursor to our aquatic robotics, which we've brought here before, they competed very well at the North Dakota State Championship and got, brought home a first-place trophy, and did very well in many other components of the competition. In the same vein, we started a non-competitive first LEGO League for families who cannot commit three hours a week for a four or five month period, so it spawned another group. We had a very successful project day where we, I was very proud, we had highlighted project areas for most every big discipline of 4-H, from animal science to science to engineering and food. And we had 60 youth attend that, and would you believe, when you have 60 youth attend, it takes 20 volunteers to do hands-on projects. It was a very busy and great, great day, and everyone felt great about it at the end. Youth leadership is another very, very important part of 4-H. We had 10 youth this last month come back from training in Crookston, very excited, and we had four younger youth attain, attend training in the fall. So those are formal ways that kids can get youth leader training, but we use that as a starting grounds for our youth ambassador program, which are really our leaders from our teen division that go on and lead the younger groups. And they kind, some of them morph into our green team at the fair, which is pretty high status in Clay County. They worked their way up to families, parents, youth are all, how do I get my child on that team? How do I join that team? And so it's, these are training grounds that we help kids, because that's kind of the big showcase, and where everybody knows that you're a leader. Our food stand, green team, just did a phenomenal job last year. They were assistant managers, and I've never heard so many compliments about youth as we did from that group, including my own son, and I told him I've never had so many compliments about you ever. But they have developed their own plan, and they're going to mentor each, in each hour shift, they're going to take another person who hasn't done it before and mentor them. So when they move out in the next year or two, they've trained younger members. They're also going to help with menu planning this year, ordering and finances, so they've really stepped up to almost a staff level, I guess in that way. Volunteer system is something else that we've really concentrated on. We've had two volunteer trainings. We have 6D screen volunteers with Clay County 4-H. I've visited six of our community clubs so far this year, and I just came back from a two-day training on what does a quality club meeting look like. And so the next time I come back to these clubs, we will help them go through an evaluation process where they can look to see what areas do we want to make changes in, and help them come up with plans to do that. We have several committees. We had a kickoff training committee meeting that did very well, and all of our groups are moving forward as horse project, animal science, food and consumer science, to do their own education to, to the youth. And so that's kind of what drives some of our programming outside of what's generated in the office. So that's what's going on in 4-H.
I just want to comment on the, you talk about the green team and the fair and the food stand. I remember years ago when my son was involved in that, and I was also on the, I forget what they call it.
Board of Directors.
Board of Directors, yes. I was on the Board of Directors. And I remember meeting at Brenda Schaefer's house, so this does go back some time ago. And that's when we had found out that the couple that had been running the food stand for a long time wanted to kind of bow out. And so at first, the reaction was, oh, no, what are we going to do? And I said, well, let's let the kids do it. And so I'm glad to hear that that's really happening, and they're kind of taking charge and running it. Now, obviously, there's a, there's got to be a little parental guidance when it maybe comes to ordering and some of that stuff, but, and I've noticed that they, they really do a good job, and I'm glad that's still going on. Now, they even got students teaching students now, and mentoring programs. That's really, that's really interesting, really good. I just wanted to comment on that.
So I think I've appreciated Lisa's new take, new take on that, and I apologize.
You can move them around a little bit, I think.
Fighting a bit of a cold today myself, so I won't be shaking later either. And so I want to commend Lisa as well on the job that she's done in a few short months in being able to continue on the programming and, and to enhance it as well. And I think that, Kevin, you brought up a good point, is that we're always looking for authentic leadership experiences for our young people, and that's a way to do that. And so we come to you today to, to share that and to keep you updated on that, and would love to come again to bring young people to share that. But we also come to talk about the requests that we have for the halftime position, and we've been having those conversations. And so on the back page of that handout, I'm not going to read that through, there's really nothing new that you haven't received before, but just as a, to highlight a couple of things is that we have very much appreciated the support of the commission over the last, well, many, many decades, frankly, to extension and to 4-H youth development. And so in 2009, when we had a halftime position, that individual chose to resign, and understandably with things they were, way they were at that time, the board chose to freeze the position. And so that's what we've been coming back to see if we could unthought. But in the meantime, we were fortunate to be able to seek out some additional ways to support the program through the Promise Fellows, and so have been able to maintain the level of support and work done with Clay County youth. And for reasons that we've discussed before, that just is not as feasible anymore with different changes in the program. And so that's why we come back to you to, to be able to say, could you look at investing $20,000? We have a gift through the Glendon Farms Corporation. We have some money left through that, that would be able to add to that, that we could hire a halftime position. And we know that it would be short-term because we don't have a commitment from the Glendon Farms to continue. They've asked us to submit another proposal, and we're hopeful, but we also want to be real upfront and honest that we don't know that we have that in the meantime. But we are looking that if the county commissioners could look at investing an additional $20,000, we would add to that again. And then we could look at keeping the level of programming in Clay County as we've, we've come to enjoy, so that our after-school programs could continue to reach over 100 young people throughout every corner of the county. We've had a long time, 10 years actually, that our Summer Survivor Program has worked with parks and rec, community education, other school-aged childcare facilities. We have two summer interns that are coming, so we wouldn't, we would be able to do some of that programming, but would still have over 300 young people that wouldn't be able to participate. As well as just, you know, Lisa talked about the technology and some of those pieces. So many opportunities that with just the addition of a halftime person could really continue to keep level of programming that we've enjoyed in Clay County.
Becky, this would be, this would be a contract still with the U of M, right?
It would be.
So we would, if we went ahead with this, we'd do an addendum to the MOA that we have with you right now, and it would add in the halftime position, and it would spell out that the county would contribute $20,000, and the rest would come from grant funding.
Okay, all right. I speak to this, and I'm sure John will want to comment, and maybe Wayne as well. When I left this committee this last time, so I wanted John to have a final opportunity to serve on that committee, because he's been on a long time, and we couldn't have three of us on there, so. But, but before I left, I had told you all, and I had made a commitment, that we would look, search high and low for, but once we got more of our year-end numbers in for 2013, that it would be high up on my list anyway for wanting to consider to do something. We still haven't seen those numbers yet, but I'm, I understand they're coming soon.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The next week, we, the auditor office accepts counts of receivables until the end of February, so we'll, we've looked at the expenditures, and we'll bring some final figures next week.
Thank you, Brian. So, so I, you know, I just want to tell you that, that I certainly, you know, and again, because our '14 budget is established and, and it's pretty clear, unless we would pull from someplace else in the 2014 budget, there's, there's no place to get those dollars from. But I, I remain very optimistic that, that we still will have something from 2013 that we can look at to at least carry us forward through this 2014 year and not see a decrease in the services to the kids. Wayne, did you have a comment?
I also support the $20,000 you're asking for. First of all, it's worth it. On a more pragmatic level, 120 children who might not be served because of that. If one of them went astray, that would cost Clay County a lot more than $20,000. And I think it's a terrific investment, and like our chair said, hopefully, something can be found within the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
John?
This, this group doesn't need to be convinced of the value of 4-H, I think, but I want to share a story that, that Tony Smith told at the AMC Executive, or I guess, AMC Extension Committee Meeting, Committee Meeting last week at the St. Paul. And she said that she'd been trying to get a person, he's a motivational speaker, she wanted him to, for Futures Meeting for AMC, but she also was thinking that he'd be a good person to speak at the next conference in December for AMC. And she found out that this person normally charges $25,000 for, for a presentation, and of course, she said she had no budget for, for that. But so she was, but she was, she said, I'm going to try anyway. So she was talking to the guy, and she asked if he ever did anything per bono, and so on, well, you know, that's something you could consider and so on. But she, she said, just, just, I thought, it's a long shot, she says, but I'm going to ask him, she said. By any chance, did you ever have anything to do with 4-H? Well, yes, he said, I wouldn't be where I am today if it wasn't for 4-H. And, and it turned out that she was able to make a deal with him, he's, you know, she didn't get it per bono, but he's going to be speaking, and got it down into the price range that we could handle for the conference, and he's going to come for free to the Futures Meeting and, and so on. But she said it was just a long shot, she had no idea if he was connected with 4-H, but when she asked, that's, he's gave credit for his, his success in life. So I think we need to remember that a lot of people can go back to looking at 4-H as their inspiration and their, their time of, of preparing them for leadership, and so.
Very good, thank you.
Are we looking at just a one-year thing? You say the Glendon Farms aren't, you're not sure whether they're going to get it again?
Right.
Is this position just for one year?
Well.
Looking to continue it?
Yeah, we would definitely look to continue it. The current MOA with the county agreement is through 2015, so we would, we would, would want to kind of match this position with that through 2015, too, would be our goal. If, depending on that funding and what the county's thinking at that time with the 2015 budget proposal, we could come back and make that change to the addendum again, but that would be our goal to continue it, yes.
I think that it's one thing that we, we did not use last year, and maybe we don't even have to wait for, for the final report, because we know we didn't use any of that $25,000 that was put into the unanticipated last year.
Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And so there's $20,000 there. If we wanted to, to approve right away this thing, it wouldn't affect the budget, the new budget at all. And we would, of course, next fall have to decide if we're going to put it into, continue it into the 2015 budget, but that would be our hope, that it could be, it could be done at that, at that time. I, I just think this is a very important thing. We've got so many kids that are not reached, and, and this, the after-school program especially is significant for those who aren't, haven't been a part of the traditional club 4-H. And so I would really encourage us to, to look seriously at that.
Can we, is Lori gone this week?
Yeah, she was, Mr. Chair, she was gone last week, but she's gone still today, and that's another reason why we wanted to hold off. We would have had to push kind of tight to get the solid numbers today, and we want her.
And I appreciate, John, the fact that we didn't spend any, any money in that account. And in all honesty, I, I, I'm pretty confident that we're going to be able to see these revenues over expenditures, at least enough to warrant this. But I, just for safety sake, you know, we can, we were under in spending in some areas, but we also go over in areas. So as a county as a whole, that's where my concern comes in, that we can do it, and I, going into this, I would think, Ben, that that MOU, if that MOU were to go into and match the MOU, that would go through 2015. We'd be making that $20,000 commitment then through 15 as well. But you wouldn't be certain of matching grants, so what would happen in the instance if there was no matching grants?
The way, the way that we drafted the addendum to the agreement is that it just, there's a line in there about 2014, how the county will contribute $20,000, and the rest for that year would come from grant funding. So we, we know that even though we have, even for other, the current positions that the county's supporting right now, we know that that's contingent upon the 2015 budget proposal, so.
Okay, so that, so 15 is left open?
Right.
Okay.
And there's a, with the, with the agreement, there's a 90-day L clause if we have to make any changes, a 90-day notice to make any changes.
Mr. Chair, this decision could be made, is it always next week then?
I, I would say yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say yes. And I don't think one week is going to hurt you any.
No, that'll be good. I'll, I can email Brian the, the draft addendum. He can help and take a look at that.
We'll take a look at those financial numbers, and we should be able to let you know after next week's board meeting.
That'll be good.
Or if you would like to come back, you certainly can come back and twist our.
I'm in the cities, but otherwise, I'd love to.
You can email him, you know, get some fancy vows and.
I'd be willing to do that. I, I want to share too, and thank you so very much. And a couple of weeks ago, I was, met a Holly parent, and we just happened to be talking that I worked with 4-H, and she said, you know, her son was in 4-H after school, and when are we going to have that again? And I said, well, call your commissioners. But I, she is very much an athletic and a sporty person, and so she was talking with her son and saying, well, which sports do you want to be in? And she, he said, I want to be in 4-H. And, and that touched my heart, but it, but it also said that we really meet a need for young people out there. And so, and I know you realize that, and we appreciate it very much, your support.
Yeah, I noticed, I, I watched a little bit of the Moritz City Council meeting here this last week, and I noticed the Probesfield Farm issue was before the, it was a committee of the whole meeting of the councils. And there was quite a bit of talk about 4-H members and animals, some of the city 4-H people, and they don't have access to places to have the, the animals. And so Probesfield Farm is, is interested in looking at having a place where small animals can be kept, and they, for example, whether it was rabbits or chickens or whatever, they'd have them in flocks, and then these 4-H kids could come out there. They wouldn't necessarily own this particular chicken with a band on it, as they said, but come fair time, they would all be able to maybe take one of these animals and take it to the fair, so I thought that was pretty neat. And I think they're working with the council on now, because any time you start talking about a large number of animals within the city limits, it's, it does raise some, some issues, but, but it was nice to see 4-H kids being talked about at the city council meeting as well, so.
That's great. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right.
Thanks for your good work.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
What are you doing, sir?
In fact, you have several things for us this morning.
Yeah, agendas are keep getting longer and longer, but I guess we, it's good to sign, though, we're busy, and we've got a lot of stuff to get approved and keep working on, so.
All right, well, let's take these one at a time here, and we'll start as it is on the agenda. We have approval of final documents for Contract 613, it's a 2013 box culvert.
Yeah, when we opened bids on this project, Contract 613, it's a combination of six different sites for concrete box culverts. Some of them are on state aid roads, one is on a county road, and three of them are on township roads. You get the contract, or the state aid numbers there in front of you. The total, the original contract when we opened bids was about $451,000. The final amount to be approved is $468,391.90. Was about 3.8% over the original bid in the entirety of it. What happened there was on one of the sites up by Felton there, after we had it all approved, the landowners weren't happy with the size of it, so they went back to the watershed, and we went back and forth a little bit. We had to have Houston take another look at the hydraulic area, because there's so much breakout flows on the, the South Grand to Wild Rice up in that area, and we didn't really know how to capture those breakout flows. So what we ended up doing is having to add a whole nother box culvert to the site. It was a little bit of a additional amount of work for us, as we had, the first pipe was all in, shaped up, the rock was in the ground, and then we had to dig it all back up, and the pipes sat right beside it, but.
Was it a, was it a diameter issue, not big enough diameter-wise? Was it a length issue?
They, they didn't want the water to be backed up, they wanted the water to flow through, I guess, so it was the owners on the, on the back side of it that were a little concerned about the size of it. And we felt that, we, well, we did design it accordingly to what we, what we had there, we just didn't have these breakout flows. We didn't know how, how much to account for overland flows coming at it, so we worked with the watershed and with Houston Engineering, and we got something that worked for everybody, so. The town, town bridge account did fund that extra pipe, and was very little additional cost to the township, so it worked out pretty good.
Okay, all right. So.
Approve final documents for Contract 613, 2013.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Approval of final document, Contract Number 713, that's 2013 box culvert.
This was a pipe that came through the design phase a little later than the first six, so we ended up opening bids on this one separately, assigning it Contract Number Six, or 713. This is SAP 1459864. This one was originally bid at $78,859. Final amount to be approved is $80,447. I believe this one is on County Road 68, but I guess, I can't quite remember if that's the exact route that it's on, but everything went real good on this one. Riley Brothers, who's also the contract, contractor for 613 out of Morris, Minnesota, constructed the, the pipe, and it was a good project, it worked out real good. A little bit overdue to a small, we had to add a small metal pipe. Sometimes as we dig these things up, we realize a pipe that we thought was going to work to stay in place is old and shot, so we ended up replacing a small metal pipe in a little bit additional borrow as we put it together. Sometimes you don't exactly know how much film material you're going to need when you put it back together, so minimal amount of overruns, so for about an $80,000 project.
Wayne?
Did you find the word borrowed, somebody?
Okay, yeah, borrowed is just fill dirt. As you put the pipe back in the ground, some of the existing stuff you dig out is top soil and, and unsuitable to put back in, so you find additional, it could be gravel, it could be a, more of a clay material. Yep, it's a, yep, just, it's dirt, I guess, for the most part.
All right, all right, so we got a description on Contract 713. What's for this?
I would move approval, final documents for Contract 713, 2013 box culvert. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. We'll move on to approval of final contracts for Number 113, asphalt overlays.
Yeah, we, we lumped all our overlays together, and this was a big portion of that bond funds that we bonded for, trying to get ahead on some of these maintenance overlays, I guess. We had them on County Road 2, County Road 11, just north of Saban, County Road 19, that was over a box culvert site, 17 was over a box culvert site, and then County Road 31, that was our big project on this, on this group on. It took a little while to get the contractor in there to get everything done. I know some of the, some of the residents along County Road 2 wanted things done a little quicker, but all in all, I think it went out pretty well. When we did County Road 17, there was actually two 17s on here, one was the box covert, and the other one was the couple miles north of 94 there, west of Glendon. We had planned on overlaying the shoulders in a certain area there. As we got out there, the shoulders fell apart, and we had to do quite a bit additional shoulder work, and that pretty much accounted for that 9%. I know one thing, as we were a little, we were a little worried about the amount of overrun, and we did bring it to the Highway Committee, I'm not sure if you remember or not, last summer, but there was a significant overrun on that one, and we wanted to bring it to the Highway Committee and let them know. So, the original amount was just under $4 million. It was $3,00934.495. The final contract to be approved is $4,282,257.77. I know one question that the Highway Committee asked was, how are we gonna handle the overage? 'Cause that was, you know, just under $300,000 of overage, and when we went into the bid there, we were about a million under on this project alone, so I guess there was a little bit of room for overages and things like that. This year's gonna be pretty important. My final item, I guess, reverts back to that bonding and stuff, so this year will tell us how we're gonna work with the rest of those bond funds, as we were quite a bit under last year. We had some overages as well by the end of the season, so, plus our scope changed on the projects that we're gonna build here in 2014, so it's pretty crucial we get good bids again to know how much work we can do in 15.
All right, let's see, board's wishes on the documents. We have a motion to approve contract 113.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
I just have one question. Have we, this winter, have we had any trouble with any of these new overlays, cracking or...
Nope, no, the overlay's been real good. I've been noticing there's been a lot of thermal cracking on other roads, though, like the Highway 52 there, just right by our office, as you come towards I-94, there's a big long crack that's running along there, and the extreme cold temperatures will pull them across. We're gonna have to probably do a lot of crack filling, you know, that's gonna be some of our maintenance stuff we've been talking about. Typically, it's something we used to do every year, every other year. We haven't done it for a few years, but we're gonna have to come behind ourselves and start filling those cracks in with that rubberized material, keeping the water out, down out of your base, otherwise it just keeps getting wider and getting worse.
The state reserve is 75 this year, and there's already places everywhere it's cracked.
Sure.
The new.
Those reflective cracks are almost impossible to not come through. You hope with a, with a thick enough overlay that you'd get a few years that it wouldn't come through, but that's your next deal. As soon as you overlay them, you come back in and fill those cracks back in, they come right through. The old mat, they just reflect right through.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, with no other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. We'll move on to approval of construction and maintenance agreement for Cassaf 52 project.
Yeah, this is our, in conjunction with our grading project on 52, we've got some additional material that we'd rather not truck and pay trucking costs on. So, we talked to one of the adjacent landowners, we also met with NRCS office to make sure it was okay to place some of the, the borrow or fill material out there on that area. What we agreed to do is pay two years' rent on it, so first year would be the construction year, second year would be next year, just in case their productivity is not as good as it would've been had they not let us put our material there. We're estimating needing about 25 acres of rent here. We're anticipating to be about $12,500. We worked it out with the landowner, and we went through things, and both parties are agreeable to it. The final cost will be based on the survey, so we don't pay too little or too much, I guess, so at this time, I'd like to get approval to sign that maintenance agreement with the landowner, so we can place the additional, see, we're gonna be bringing a lot of more gravel out there, so a lot of the road bed that's there now is gonna get moved and replaced with suitable materials, so.
So, Dave got a question for you, so we're gonna, rather than truck this stuff off, we're gonna pile it on 25 acres of land, and then we're gonna build the road, and two years from now, what are we gonna do with the stuff?
Well, what we do is, we strip his farmland off a little bit, we put the material there, and we put the black dirt on top, and then he farms it, just.
Okay, so, so it ends up remaining there permanently?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
We did that on County Road 8, and it's amazing, we're looking at, also trying to do the same thing on 18, and we're talking to some of the landowners, and, you know, we're looking at maybe two and a half, three feet of additional fill for maybe a couple hundred-foot area.
Yeah, and you spread it all over, it doesn't.
Yep, it sounds like an awful lot, but when you get all said and done, you can hardly even tell, you know, you might think it's, you're gonna notice this big gigantic berm or wad of dirt out there, and it blends in, 'cause we did it on, on County Road 8, just west of Rusted, and you can hardly even tell when you get in and flatten it all out and put the black dirt on top, and they start farming it. In some areas, if they've got low areas or areas that don't produce as well, it actually helps the farmer out, so down on 8, we found that out, they were actually pretty receptive of doing that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move to approve item agenda number four.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. We'll move on to the approval of right-of-way acquisition for SAP 14-652-13.
Looks like on February 4th, at that time, we thought we only needed one parcel of land for additional right-of-way on our 52 project. As we finished up our storm sewer design under the underpass, there was an area on the south side, and, south and west of the bridge there, that doesn't drain real well. There is existing drainage coming from this field area, down the slopes and into our storm sewer area, so what we decided to do is kinda fix that area up a little bit, but would be then outside of the existing right-of-way. At, on the 4th, we did utilize existing right-of-way appraisals of non-tillable land, and were approved at 1250 per acre. I'd also like to do the same thing on this parcel, and maybe any future parcels if we do need some. At this time, we are extremely confident we will not need any additional right-of-ways, but if I could get approval, would that work, Jenny, to get approval for non-tillable land on 52 at 1250 an acre?
Yes.
That way, I guess, if there was an additional parcel that did pop up, I wouldn't have to come back to the board if it was the same type of land use.
So, you're expanding what you're requesting to include?
A second parcel along 52, same type of land, and we would offer the same dollar amount to this landowner as well.
If it's needed.
And this one is needed.
Oh, it is needed?
Yeah, this one here, so this is our second parcel that we know we'll need.
All right.
I guess, if, in the future, I guess, my point being, when I was here on the 4th, what I should've got approval for is non-tillable land at 1250 an acre, and if we do need additional parcels, that we would acquire them at the same dollar amount.
All right.
I would move that.
Right. There's a motion by John, second by Grant. Any further discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. We'll move on. Your last item is approval to open bids for county grading and byproduct paving projects.
Yeah, this is basically our 2014 workload here. We've got the grading project on Highway 52, we've got the grading project on 18, as well as the joint project City of Moorhead on County Road 3 here, 11th Street, right by the courthouse. We would like to advertise the three consecutive weeks, and then open bids April 1st at 9:00 AM.
Move to approve.
Yeah, so I'll second, I have a question, though. During the construction on 52, how are you going to route the traffic?
I think we've, we've got a couple of detours. We typically like to keep them on the paved roads if we can. We do have a detour route, I can bring that to our next Highway Committee, and maybe that's something that we should be reviewing, that's next week.
Talking 21 and 2 for...
Yeah.
How about to the north, if someone were the elevator, do they have to go?
I think they'd go on Highway 9 and shoot over on 55. Is that the elevator you're talking about, right on County Road 55? About a mile or half mile north of town?
Right.
Yeah, so they should be able to get through on Highway 9.
So, they should be able to go either direction.
Yep, yep. I'll bring our detour routes with, because there's also some detour routes, there's some staging on County Road 3, or 3, right outside the door here, so maybe I'll bring those detour routes with me on next, a week from today.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else, Dave?
No.
All right, thanks for coming today.
We didn't.
Oh, we didn't, go on, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, thank you. Thanks, thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, our next item, Mr. Berg, I'm assuming here, we're gonna talk about the furniture purchase for the motor vehicle department remodeling.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if we could, please. What you have before you, or in your packet, is a request for approval, and the quote for the furniture for the remodel out at the motor vehicle department is listed as $47,509.17, but in reviewing it, we did talk at our committee about removing the vestibule bench, and you see, that's pretty sizable, because it does bench, or it does bolt down to the bottom. That vestibule bench was $2,436.11, and we did talk about removing that out of, out of the entryway, if you recall, members of the committee. So, I guess I would like to request the, the amount be amended to $45,073.06 to remove that bench. And I guess in our conversation, and I know sometimes when you start doing remodeling projects, you wonder about replacing all of the furniture, or can you use some of it, and different things, and, and I know the, we're looking at nine workstations here, and in past experience with remodeling projects, I know the figure's been around $4,000 for a workstation, and if you remember, they do have desks behind, currently, they, they have the workstation at the counter, and then they have the desk behind, and we are limiting those desks, and they will have one workstation, and these are going to be adjustable. We spent quite a bit of time discussing the fact that they're adjustable, so that they can stand or either sit at those locations, depending upon what employee you have at that workstation at that time, and into the future. We had quite a bit of discussion about that, and decided that that would be appropriate to go with that, so that's a little bit higher because of that flexibility, too, so.
Yeah, this has been through committee, and it went very well. All of these are made in America, and it's a concern.
That's a good point.
Mr. Chair, I move the amount for furniture that our administrator mentioned, $45,000 something.
$73.06.
Is there a second?
I'll second that amount. I guess this came, if you wanna add, I think these bids came in lower than we anticipated.
Anticipated, yes.
$20,000, wasn't it?
Mr. Chair, I have a question on this, the one you just eliminated, was determined it was too expensive, or determined we didn't need that bench, or?
Mr. Chair, both. First of all, when we saw the amount, we thought that was quite high, although if you were going to have a bench out there, you should have it bolted down, so that it couldn't be used for, I'll say, weapons of vandalism, or something along those lines. But then we thought, in that, in that glass vestibule that is the entrance to it, if somebody is going to wait a little bit for a bus, or a ride, or something like that, I know if it's an older person, you probably would want the room to have them sit, but, you know, when we talked about it in committee, we thought that it might be just something that dirt collects under, and people will stand and look out if they're waiting for a ride anyway and things, so that was our discussion.
Could you just have a couple chairs there instead?
Yeah.
You want them bolted down, though?
Yeah, I think you would. I don't think you want something that could be used or moved around, but, you know, it could be added later, and that's what we talked about, too, that if it were felt that was needed, we could then add something later, but that's a pretty pricey.
It's a cheaper, cheaper way to get a seat than...
It seems like it, yeah, that, that seemed to be, although, you know, you see them in, in little vestibules where they are bolted down, and laugh kind of situation, so.
There are plenty of chairs inside, since.
Inside, there's plenty of chairs.
Yeah, where somebody's waiting for a ride, that's a...
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. We'll move on to committee reports. Frank, you have to leave shortly, so do you wanna give yours first?
Sure. I guess last Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we're down in the cities, took in a few conferences. I focused mostly on public health and the human services. I guess after a couple of meetings, a couple, a couple of weeks ago, I felt I needed a little bit more training on that, and I met with Ron DePorter, too, and I've talked a lot about that stuff, and, I don't know, sometimes my impression of that came with, well, the funds are coming from the state and from the federal, so don't, doesn't concern us as much, you know, but I think it still does, you know, it's just, I got some good information there, got some good knowledge on that. Went to the MRCC meeting also that night, Tuesday night, where Grant was there, and Miss John was there, and Brian spoke there. I don't know how agricultural land is being taxed, and I guess the emphasis there is gonna be on transportation funding, parks and trails, bonding for 10-ton roads, and exempt access from educational requirements, so that was a long discussion that night, and the meeting went on about three, a little over three hours, so there was a lot of discussion going on there. Thursday night, Family Healthcare Center gave us a report on how they're doing on hiring the new CEO there, and that's getting down, they're getting down to the interviews now, so we're getting closer there. They've got five people selected, so it's getting a lot closer there. Heartland Trail Extension meeting yesterday morning that Grant and I were at, discussed, Dave had a big map there showing where that Heartland Trail, possibility where it's gonna run through Clay County, so a lot of good information there. Yesterday afternoon, I went into the, Judge Michael Fritz was in, snow ceremony's there, there was a big crowd there, and it was very nice. I think we're getting a good man, very good man, according to people that spoke about him. Looks like we're gonna get a very good man there in Clay County. Last night, I went to Aggie Recreation Trails of Edulon, they were getting a lot of discussion on funding for that thing, where the money's gonna be coming from and stuff like that. Just a lot of discussion whether to continue that or not, you know, I thought it was sort of strange, you were talking about Heartland Trails coming through, and Aggie Trails is struggling, you know, and now we're talking about Heartland's trail coming, where they're gonna get all the money from, you know, and stuff, so good discussion on that, that was nice, though.
Thank you, Frank.
On Wednesday, February 26th, Campus Improvement Committee update from the architect, Ryan Segur, had an update, updates from the project manager, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing contractors. Most of it is on schedule. Clay County, I believe, chose the right company for this project. Robbie Newman was unable to, Robbie Norman, rather, was unable to attend because of the lockdown exercise that morning. I talked to him later, and he was given a thorough update. I'm gonna pass out copies of the minutes of that meeting, so you can see what a excellent job our architect does in keeping up on things. Few more. And then, on Thursday, February 27th, Lakes and Prairies Board Meeting, general business, several grant applications, and there was a lot of information regarding Head Start. Once again, room is available with the Moore School District for 2014-15. That was up in the air for quite some time, it's now been resolved. Continued discussion of joining with West Central Community Action, and we'll see what happens there down the line. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
From time to time, people might notice that one Commissioner has to get up and leave, and today Commissioner Gross had to leave us a little bit early due to a funeral that he was going to, so I just thought I'd bring that up. Grant, you would, could you give your report?
Let's see, Frank already reported on MRCC, was at the AMC conference also, and attended the items related to public safety issues, and had some good presentations there on access to juvenile offender records, and, and a Supreme, one of the Minnesota Supreme Court justices, they're talking about some issues, one of which was doing more ITV arraignments and that type thing, which would be a good thing throughout the state. Frank also talked about, we had a Heartland Trail meeting yesterday, it was with MetroClog there, which is gonna be very helpful. I think we're finally looking like we're gonna actually get something done, so. We had one of the city engineers from Moorhead there, and Dave was there, and MetroClog has already got some money planned to spend to move this thing forward this year, so it's starting to look up, and then we may get some bonding money also from the legislature to start moving this forward, so.
Good.
That was it for me.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, mostly last week, it was involved with the AMC Legislative Conference. I went to the MRCC meeting, and it was a long, long meeting that dealt with a lot of different issues, and I think they, they did finally come up with a list of priorities for legislative action, but it was, it took a long time to get there, so. The conference, I thought, went, went well. The conference, I thought, went well. I went, I attended the session on transportation funding as far as the workshops, and it's really interesting, the whole dilemma about, everybody acknowledges we need our roads improved, but getting people to accept that a tax increase to do it is really difficult. And I thought that was, that discussion makes it universal, it's over the country. It's not just Minnesota or Clay County, it's all over the country that that's a problem. So we need to figure out ways to do that, and they talked about the sales tax rather than on, on Huffer highways, rather than the gas tax, or in addition to the gas tax, and how that could, that would end up, as gas prices inflated, the income would inflate as well. Where currently, you know, our gas, our sales, gas tax money is decreasing all the time because of better mileage and so on. So that's, we've talked about, and it's, they certainly have a way to collect that that would be really not any burden to the retailer. And I didn't realize it either, but the gas tax itself is collected at the wholesale level and paid there, and they could do the same with sales tax if they had that, but it's a long ways off on figuring out what's the best way to do it. But everybody agrees, we need more travel, we need more transportation money. There's just no question about it if we're going to maintain our infrastructure. The longer we wait to figure that out, the worse it's going to be to catch up, so. So that's a, that's a big issue for us. The, the rest of the week was, didn't have, didn't have any meetings, I guess, to report, so that was, that was it.
Okay, and I had no meetings last week, so we'll move on to our administrator, Brian.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I did attend the legislative conference. It was the first winter when I had attended, and I thank you for that. It was, it was very good. I, we started out with a long one, as has already been mentioned, a long meeting, but I thought we had some interesting speakers. We had some, I know in my Association of Administrators meeting, we had an entire afternoon of presenters, and partly one, you know, sometimes they stand out to you, but we had this leadership group that had gone to the Ukraine, and one of, one of the administrators was part of that leadership group. They had gone over and conducted meetings over there and leaders, leader groups and things, and it was really interesting. One of the, one of the people that was involved in it was a Russian from the Ukraine. So with what's the events that are happening over there, we really kind of had an extended discussion as to leadership and stuff, so I thought that was very good. I had a long discussion with Tony Smith, and we found to use his as a presenter again this year, so we got things pretty well nailed down in regards to our upcoming training session as well. So that went really well. Just a reminder that I think you've all received invitations on March 17th, Monday. March 17th is the township meeting again, and it's in Holly, and I think I mentioned that to you last time, because that's what I'd been told, and this time it's on the invitation that it's in Holly at the theater there, so just a reminder of that. I did receive an invitation from Holly Airport, or I should say, from the city of Holly, for participation in the Holly Municipal Airport Master Plan Advisory Group, and Tim Magnusson did receive an invitation as well. I haven't responded to them, but I'm, just wanted to run it by you folks, and I'm assuming you would want me to participate in that. Tim isn't going to be able to attend the first meeting, so I think the first meeting is Tuesday, March 18th at 5:30 p.m. at the Holly City Hall, so I'll plan to attend that unless you folks wish differently. Okay, go forward with that. If you, I don't know if you're receiving that, if I should forward you on it. I did get a update from Representative Lean and Representative Markort, one came in yesterday, and you'll notice Representative Markort did talk about the ag land values, but also that tax on repairs of farm machinery that they look like they've already made progress on, which is very positive, I think, for your constituents, the farmers out there, so that's, that's, that's good news. Also, I did receive some wordage from, you had sent a letter of support for the farm in the Dell, and Rhonda had supplied this to me, that it is included in Senate filing 1949. So I can just read it very briefly, and it's item number six. It says, "New foster care licensing or community residential setting licensed for up to three facilities, which are located at separate addresses on the same property in Clay County, and are operated by the same organization, are licensed for four beds in each facility, and serve adults with developmental handicap or disabilities." So that is in legislation that they are pursuing for Clay County, so that's a positive thing, I think. And I did spend about an hour with the, with Kirk, our solid waste manager. I think he's really, really, really making some progress on identifying what the needs are out there. Look forward to the advisory committee for updates, and we also probably want to meet sometime, maybe before the advisory committee, with the two county commissioners, too, to, he wants a solid sense of where we, where we want to go with some of these things, so.
Well, you can set that up, then.
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be good. Yeah, that'd be good. So, and I did follow up on your request, Commissioner Everett, in regards to the enterprise vehicles. I placed a couple calls, I talked to at least one person, but they said that the leasing person, I left a message for her, and hopefully get back to me today or sometime, so we'll follow up on that information as well. So with that, that was my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Just one other thing here, Brian mentioned the annual Townspeople's meeting. Looks like we did also get, we are invited to attend the Morgan County Township's annual election and township meeting. That is on March 11th, and I think you all got a notification of that, but I noticed that all county commissioners were invited to attend, so. With that, to Vicki, anything else?
Mr. Chair.
I do have one more thing.
Okay.
I apologize, I don't know why I didn't make a note of it, because I promised Jenny that we would talk about it today, and the legislation passed out of committee referenced the appointment of the auditor, treasurer, and recorder language that you folks have endorsed, and it can't go to, because of rules on the floor of the House, it can't go to the floor for a vote until Thursday of this week. And the timing of it's such that we have to start advertising, we have to advertise two consecutive weeks that you plan to pass a resolution appointing those positions. So we have worked with, with wordage on that, Jenny, and Vicki and I met yesterday, to tie those things down, so we'll need to get that announcement out this Thursday to be run in the next two weeks for Mondays. And then, what is it, the 18th, is that a Tuesday? You will have a resolution in your packet, and hopefully it'll pass the House by that time. And if that all falls in line, and the timing takes place on it, that will afford you the opportunity to appoint those positions versus having an election on this year. So I just wanted to bring you up to date that that is moving forward. If you see that in the paper, it's, and we didn't feel, since you guys had endorsed the action pushing forward, that the announcement needed to come to you today for board approval, and we certainly could act on it if you wished, though, but Jenny, did you have anything? Sorry, John.
Well, I think you explained it really well, but it really rests on a lot of contingencies and, you know, what's going to happen here in the next week. But if all goes as hoped, we'll have the publication done, and we'll be good to have a public hearing then on the 18th, so I anticipate that things will, will go smoothly, but you never know.
And thank you for, that is a public hearing on the 18th, that is being advertised, and will be at 9 o'clock on the 18th. Now, we haven't set that, and we normally set our public hearings, so we probably should have a motion by the board to set that public hearing on the 18th.
And I think the time, we change it to 8:35.
Did we? Okay.
So it would be 8:35 on Tuesday, March 18th.
Okay.
And the public hearing is?
The statute requires a public hearing.
Is required.
Before the board can pass a resolution, which would.
Okay.
Change the positions from elected to appointed.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. So what, what happens if this process gets delayed? Are we would be having a public hearing without authorization? Would we just cancel the public hearing?
We would have to cancel the public hearing. It would really become moved, because we wouldn't have the legislation in place to affect that action.
All right.
The action you talked about is in the House. Did the Senate already pass?
Uh huh.
Yes, Mr. Chair. It did pass last year, and since this is a continuation of the last year's session, that's why they're moving forward with it, just going through the House. It's passed out of committee, just waiting for a floor vote now.
Okay.
Can this action take place before the governor signs it, even if it goes through both houses?
The public hearing cannot, but we anticipate that before the 18th, the governor will have signed it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Public hearing is set for the 18th at 8:35.
And Mr. Chair, we apologize for this little bit of confusion, but the timelines are so tight on it, that if we don't, if we don't do this, and again, Jenny feels it's perfectly legal to do what we do, so that's why we're pushing forward with it.
All right, if we have nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.